Of course, Mr. President. Mrs. Grizankowski.
Here.
Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
Ms. Forrest.
Here.
Ms. Dodd.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here.
I am here, and Mr. Carlson.
Here.
All President accounted for.
All right, thank you. Please rise if you can for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I also move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right.
I'll support.
Vice President and Ms. Dodd, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, ayes have it, agenda is approved as presented. And I'll start Section 2, Communication and Reports, items from the Board President. Just a couple of quick items here. Number one, since the last time we met, and it's been a little bit of a time, almost a month here, there was a letter that went out by our state senator, and it generated some phone calls from our parents as well as some of our teachers and faculty in the district, emails that I received as well as phone calls, and I know Superintendent Sala did as well. The letter was addressing some concerns at school district level. I think all of the members here have received that letter. But I think what's important, I just want to fill in a little bit, as your spokesperson for the board, I worked with Superintendent Sala at that time to ask him to review the letter and what his thoughts were. Dr. Sala had already communicated with Senator Runstedt in regards to our concerns about the letter. He had a very nice conversation with the state senator. The state senator was very appreciative of the dialogue, and he was open and honest with the dialogue and had shared that those concerns were not written for Huron Valley School District. And of course, we took him at his word. We, I think Dr. Sala shared with them some of the confusion that that had created in our district with some of our staff and parents. So Dr. Sala and I discussed, and Dr. Sala put out a letter communicating to the district in regards to this communication that went out and had shared. Of course, that generated some more emails, both positive and negative in regards to the letter that Dr. Sala sent out. But I think it's important for you as board members, I know I spoke with some of you in regards to this matter as well, but I just want to make sure that you kind of understand the flow and the process that took place here. And I also wanted to thank Dr. Sala for reaching out and, in the first place, having that relationship with Senator Runstedt to be able to communicate with him and get some dialogue going to understand where, what the intentions of that letter were. So I wanted to make sure that this board knew about those communications that Dr. Sala and I had. I also wanted to, just as a reminder, that July 26, Tuesday, I think two weeks from tomorrow, is the filing deadline, 4:00 p.m. There are four seats that are up on this Board of Education. There are three six-year terms and one two-year term to fill the remaining balance of Jeff Long's position as he had stepped down. I know that we have some, most of the board members here that are currently on the board are running. There is one open seat. I am not running for reelection. And I want to encourage community members to really take a look and think about this and encourage them to fill out an application and look to run. These are nonpartisan positions. I think that's very important to stress. There's too much partisan bickering that happens in Washington, D.C. and Lansing. We certainly don't need it in the hallways of our schools or our school district or this Board of Education room. So I think it's important for us to remain focused, as we have been as a school board, on the children of this district and representing all of the children of the district and all of the voices and the stakeholders and the parents and the community members. I think that that is very, very important. I would encourage members on this board not to run as a slate. Run as an individual, authentic person yourself. Slates get into politics, and that has no place in our, in our school board elections. I would encourage you to run as an individual candidate. Stand on your own merits if you are currently serving on the board. And if you're new to the board, stand on your new ideas and challenges that you would like to face. I think it's very important that we fight to make sure that our Board of Education doesn't morph into a political basis or board, that we remain nonpartisan, that we keep politics out of the boardroom here, and that we keep the focus on students and on parents and their voices and continue to do the good work that we've been doing. So again, I want to encourage citizens that are interested, three six-year terms, one two-year term, and the filing deadline is July 26 at 4:00 p.m. Thank you. All right, we'll now move to Item B, recognitions. Dr. Sala.
So there are no recognitions this evening, Mr. President?
What's that? Do you have something? Okay. Any Huron Valley highlights? I know we have tons of highlights, but do we have any this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. School presentations?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. We don't have any kindergarten kids that want to present?
No.
Superintendent Communication?
Thank you, Mr. President. So first and foremost, I just wanted to take a moment to welcome Barb Rothler here this evening. It's our first meeting with us. Welcome to the Huron Valley family. We're very happy to have you here. Barb and I had our first of many meetings with one of our township supervisors, Mr. Don Green. Today, we, we had a lunch meeting with Don. I'm ensuring that Barb gets off to a good foot and really, you know, meets all of our key leaders throughout the community. We meet with Christian Worth on Wednesday. We're meeting with all the police chiefs as well as Rick Colwell, Rick Hamel. So I just will tell you right off the bat already, I'm very impressed with Barb. She's doing a great job. She's really thoughtful, clearly cares about the community, cares about the school district, and she's, she's all in. So welcome, Barb. We're really happy to have you here. Second item this evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, those who are in our listening audience, I want to do a quick budget update presentation. For once, the word budget present, I'm sorry, budget, budget update presentation, and good news is hand in hand. You don't often hear, you don't often hear that in the same sentence when it relates to budget. But I'm just enthralled to share that we, we are looking at some pretty-
Is that why you're sharing?
Yeah, exactly. Jeffrey gets his part as well, but I get to go first. So Rose, let's, let's pull up that quick presentation there from me. Yeah, so there it is. So we're going to start out, actually, we're going to go back one. And let's, I got this, I think. Okay, here we go. So I, I think first and foremost, what's really important is, if you recall, you know, board members and our, our listening audience, we've been talking about this since the beginning of the school year, the importance of categorizing some monies to help us get through this pandemic, in particular around special education costs. We've seen extraordinary increase in needs there. Support for mental health supports, increased need for resources as it relates to school safety. As, as the board knows, we've been working hard on transportation categorical. Unfortunately, that was not part of this budget. But I, I think it needs to be mentioned because it's something we've been talking about for several months. I, of course, increased foundation allowance is always something we're talking about. And so for our listening audience, when I say increased foundation allowance, what that means is the amount of, of money we receive per pupil in order to educate a child in Huron Valley schools. And that was at right around $87.50 this previous school year, and we saw an increase of about $450 moving into the '22, '23 school year, which is just absolutely outstanding because those are the dollars that do not have any strings attached, and we can spend it on what we feel is in the absolute best interest of every child. And then increased at-risk funding. And what's really exciting about this budget, what's really exciting about all of the advocacy of our parents is that reaching out to your local and state legislators paid off. Because when I walk through each one of those categories, I, we see a $450 increase per pupil. We see over a $1,000 increase in at-risk funding per pupil. So for every child that qualifies as being considered at risk, meaning perhaps they qualify for a free or reduced lunch, perhaps they're not proficient in, in ELA, perhaps they're not proficient in mathematics, perhaps they have a, a family member that was incarcerated. I mean, there are a number of categories that qualify a child as what we, what we call at risk. We receive an additional $1,052 to educate each one of those children. It's not every child in the district, but it's over 30% of our children that, that allows us to provide even more opportunities. Another huge, huge aspect of this budget, change in the special education formula. So now we will receive 75% of the foundation allowance and reimburse costs, whereas previously, it was either the foundation allowance or reimbursement for costs, whichever was greater. So now it's both, which is another significant dollar amount for Huron Valley schools, at least another $1.5 to $1.6 million to Huron Valley schools. And right now, we spend about $2 to $3 million above and beyond what we receive from the state in, in special education costs. Another area to, to highlight is we are receiving one-time school safety grant monies, which is, again, extraordinary, where we are receiving one-time mental health grants. And then on top of that, the Oakland County government has allocated another $350,000 to the Huron Valley schools in mental health supports, which is just extraordinary. And I have to give it up to Oakland County for, for putting, putting forth solutions when we've, all of Oakland County school districts have continued to struggle with behavior challenges and mental health supports in terms of having resources to provide those supports. So I'm, I'm grateful for the county as well as the state. It's really, there's a lot to celebrate in here. So if I go, if I go back a couple slides, the only area that was not touched on this list of priorities that we've been working on since the beginning of the year is transportation. Granted, we've worked very hard on transportation, but unfortunately, that is the one area that we have not been successful. We're going to keep at it. We're going to keep working at it. But there is a lot, a lot to celebrate here. So what does that mean for the Huron Valley schools? Hey, Rose, I'm, I'm counting on you. Let's go to the, right here. Yep, there we go. So what does that mean for the Huron Valley schools? So, so the immediately what we'll see, beginning with the start of the school year, is it, is a pretty significant increase in our positive behavior intervention supports at all elementary schools. And so what you see up here is a half of a person and then two people. And that's because we're still trying to nail down what the exact allocations will be. So it will look like as much as a half FTE increase all the way to a full person increase at each one of our elementary schools. So we're, we're excited about that, and we know that that will be a huge benefit. We heard that feedback from our families. We heard that feedback from our staff. And now we have the dollars. That's what we were waiting for. We were waiting for the dollars. And so that, again, the advocacy of our families is what, is what is making this a reality. It's that, it's, it's following through on those phone calls and those emails. We are now also able to support long-term the, the district behavior specialist position that we introduced this last year. Right around semester time, we hired an individual with expertise and working with children with emotional impairments as well as behavior challenges. She is doing a phenomenal job, and we are now going to be able to commit to making that position long-term. So that, you're, you'll see on the slide here, that's one person moving to a long-term one person. So we're glad to be able to continue to support that on a longer-term basis. If we go to the next slide, we're also immediately going to increase our support for special education programming and problem solving. One of the challenges that we saw this year when we had behavior flare-ups in some of our categorical programs in particular, whether it be at the elementary school or in our, we had some challenges with some of our categorical programs and higher needs programs at the secondary level. We didn't have as much administrative support to be able to send somebody out into the field. That was some of the feedback we heard this year. We will be moving from two special education administrators to three. We're adding another Assistant Director of Student Support Services to our, to our programming as well. So you've got behavior interventionist, you've got increased allocation of PBIS, we've got increased special education support. And then the next slide shows that we're also looking at increasing our behavior interventionist role, which is different than the behavior specialist role. That's, that's more focused on expertise and strategies that can be provided to teachers at the ready to intervene day-to-day on behalf of students. So tier one in the classroom, everyday supports. These behavior interventionist positions are at the secondary level and they're there to help with some of, some of the more volatile behaviors that we've seen with perhaps a larger student that needs to be restrained or something along those lines. So that will be increased on a as-needed basis. And then last, I, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't, I didn't mention, so this is all very, very fresh, okay? And, you know, the board may have some questions this evening. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have. But the, the ink hasn't even dried on, on the bill yet. So we are still working out the details and the exact formulas and the ratios. But I felt it was important to give this update to the board and the community because people need to hear that when the dollars are available, we are going to utilize them to best support our students. And so that's exactly what we're, what we're doing here. Dollars that are not expended in just these initial, these initial interventions and supports will be available to us as we go through the strategic planning process and as we continue to brainstorm with our, our, our teachers and our support staff regarding what supports might be helpful for them to, to best meet the needs of our students. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Van Goghtham to, to just kind of round this out and talk about some of the budget implications. You know, we think it's appropriate, given last month you approved a budget, and the budget wasn't approved by the state, that was a forecasted budget. Now that we have the actuals, we want to look at what some of those numbers mean for us. And then we'll be happy to take questions, Mr. President.
So yes, continue good news for Huron Valley schools, definitely. So we'll go, real quickly, we, we met as a Finance and Operations Committee on Friday. Kind of wanted to run through some of the actual dollars that might be coming to the district and what that means for us from a programming as well as fund balance impact. So we first want to talk and just say thank you to our, our legislatures and our government for putting together such a robust school aid budget that really puts kids first and, and a large investment in all of our students, including those in the Huron Valley School District. I think it needs to be said because this is, as Paul said, very, very beneficial to Huron Valley schools and what we're able to do for our kids. As we had talked at the budget hearing just a month ago, we were allocating $300 per pupil and an increase in foundation allowance. We're happy to see that that's $150 more than our anticipated budget. So that impact alone and per pupil will be between $1.1 and $1.2 million to our budget. We also talked about the at-risk. Dr. Sala just mentioned that. The impact to Huron Valley schools is about $677,000. There's a new mental health grant. It's a new funding source for us. As Dr. Sala mentioned, we're not even sure the, the fine details of that. All we know is that based on our 7,770 student count, I've adjusted these budget numbers from what the state provided because the state provided us a flat student enrollment projection. It looks like about $833,000 for additional mental health supports, which I think Dr. Sala had alluded to. But it's important to point out that as a result of the task force, one of the number one items other than reducing class size was speaking to mental health supports and really being able to address that in not only elementary but secondary. So as I look at some of our visioning, I think really one of those things that we'll be able to take a look at is really bullet item 1A or 1B on our task force agenda and really being able to help address some of those concerns. As Dr. Sala alluded to, special education funding, again, another $1.78 million for our students. That's the Huron Valley school impact. CTE sees another $45,000. Again, as a result of the task force conversation, dealing with some of our emerging businesses, CTE is something that still has the ear of the politicians as well as community members and business owners in the area as well as the county. And so it's nice to see an additional investment in there, which we will put to good use. And then a school safety per pupil grant, which we were excited about. So again, one of the things that we addressed and that the community was very supportive of in 2019 when we asked them for money in a bond program with school safety. And, and we're happy to see that, again, adjusted for our current student count that we're going to have between $800,000 and $900,000 to, to address above and beyond what we're already doing with our school safety. And so I look forward to, you know, continuing conversations, not only with the board, but also with our community on what, what we can do to, you know, provide additional supports in those areas. So again, based on what we've read with the budget, as it impacts Huron Valley schools in particular, we're looking at about $5.3 million to the good, which, again, as a numbers guy, I get pretty excited about that because what we always talk about is the impact to kids, and that's, that's what we do. That's what we see every day and what we get up in the morning to do for our kids. And so for us to be able to have $5.3 million to do that is just phenomenal. So we're obviously very ecstatic from, from the administration side. So what I did here is you can see the projected budget that's in yellow for you for '21 and '22 is what we've already provided to you as a group and what you've approved, not only for the remaining '21, '22 school year, but also the next upcoming budget, our original budget that we proposed. I can tell you that with the fiscal year '21, '22, we've already adjusted that to the good $2.5 million because between when we last met in the middle of June and where we sit today, we were already approved for, and I've already requested $2.5 million of our 11T dollars. So we were one of the districts that was approved relatively quickly. Hats off again to our administration team. I'd like to thank Jennifer Bjorkman, our state and federal grants director, as well as Heather, our Director of Finance, who really worked together collaboratively to make sure we had a really solid application that John and I got to weigh in a little bit on. And so we were already approved. We've already requested about half of the money that we had requested, the $4.5 million was the total allocation. So you're already seeing an approved '21, '22 budget from what we had you approve three and a half weeks ago. Also, what we have in here is the general fund impact to our general fund budget as it relates to the money that I just showed you. So when we're looking at the $5.3 million in new monies, 3.0, $3 million of that is going to be recurring. So if the budgets were to hold steady going forward, we have additional special ed money as well as our per pupil that will provide us with an additional $3 million a year, which is phenomenal. And obviously, the categoricals that everybody worked so hard to get for us is the remaining 2.3. And so I've adjusted our budget, which is the, the lime green, to show that right now, if we did nothing and we just took those monies in and we accounted for $2.5 million in general fund dollars out of 11T, we could be looking at 13.6% in fund balance versus 6.7 that I spoke to just a month ago. So again, more than double where we were at as a result of the efforts of not only this group, but also the community and, and, you know, unwavering support for what we're trying to do as a school district. So again, wonderful news, all to the good, which is great to say. And it's going to afford us additional opportunities for our kiddos, which is the most important thing in what we do here. That's it for me, Dr. Sala. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Appreciate that. Advocacy is, is key, and I just am so, again, I'm so grateful to those parents that reached out to me and said, "Dr. Sala, what can we do?" And I'm so grateful for those folks following through, emailing their, their, their local legislators, state senators, our representatives, the governor's office, because I do believe that that advocacy matters. And the school district is a partner with our families to, to make these things happen. And this is just evidence of, of a tremendous budget that's going to allow us to do some things immediately, short-term, to, to identify things that we haven't even identified at this point for the medium term and certainly use some of those longer-term sustainable dollars to do things to attract and retain our staff. So with that, Mr. President, I would open it up to any questions that the board might have.
Yeah, I'll open it up for any questions. Rose, can you put the budget slide back up, at least the last, the last slide? Are there any, any questions? Ms. Dodd?
Just to clear up some jargon, can you remind everybody what 11T is?
Yes, 11T is the remaining dollars that we have available from the emergency COVID funds that were passed down from the federal level to the state level. And so we were allocated $4.5 million that we had to apply for and with the due date of the middle of June. We had submitted our application about the time that we had our last board meeting as a group. We were, have then since been approved, and our funds have become available. And so what we're able to do is reach back into the '21, '22 school year, which was still within the two and a half weeks that we had available to pull some of those expenditures that were allocable for 11T. And so we've already done so, and that's what's reflected here in that '21, '22 adjusted budget.
So does that mean there's still $2 million left in 11T to apply for? If you said we were allocated 4.5 and we received 2.5?
Yeah, so we, so we strategically, because we had the ability to do it, went and, obviously, if you have dollars available, you go get them as soon as possible.
Yep.
And so we'll still be looking for another $2 million in the '22, '23 school year. It's not reflected in this amount here for you.
Okay. And the other thing I just would like to add, and I think I've said this at almost every meeting where we talk about school finance, is the state of Michigan has a resource called the School Finance Research Collaborative, which produced a new report in '21 that talks about how much it actually costs to run Michigan schools. We're getting closer, and that's great news. But for people who are curious about how does school finance work, it's called FundMISchools.org, and they have lots of resources and information. It's a research funded by private foundations and some other places, but it's an excellent resource to kind of dive deeper for any budding budget nerds out there. It's a, it's a great resource, so.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Forrest?
Just mostly a comment and also appreciative of our, our state legislators and our governor for getting this, this budget passed. I know it wasn't easy, and it did come right down to the wire, July 1st, June 30th, July 1st. So we have it, that 11T money, there are strings attached to that. Do you have to, did you write like one whole summary to use all of the money? Or do you have to redo part of that or?
No, so we, so in the application, while it has strings, you know, we've met a lot of the requirements already for the quote-unquote strings that they're asking of us. So in that bucket of, you know, administration and continuity of staff and, and even some of our mental health supports that we've already done throughout the year, that, you know, as we talk about adding, we've already done a lot of good things already in the '21, '22 school year. So we're falling right in line with the budget allocations that we had ultimately asked for and were approved on.
Ms. Forrest, one other thing, and Ms. Dodd, this is to your question as well because the terminology oftentimes gets confused and it has multiple names. These are the equalization dollars. If you remember, there are a number of districts that received far more than we received from the federal government.
It used to be called 2X, right?
No, this is, so 2X is the 2X formula of the foundation. That, this is, whereas some higher free and reduced lunch school districts might have received twice the federal resource that we received. We lobbied that there should be, because our pandemic costs were the same as those districts. We lobbied that there should be greater equity in the allocation of those resources. And so 11T is the equalization money that we received. And we planned on that 4.5 million that we received, we have planned for budgeted- planned for budgeted and you know, for all intents and purposes, have, have planned to expend.
And then just one more quick comment. Um, you know, this money is great and I think that here in Valley, we've done our legwork with our task force meetings uh last year and we have the uh, the data, you know, that addresses some of the, especially the mental health um issues that we're all facing uh normally and then exacerbated by the pandemic. So it's going to be exciting when we work on our strategic plan, coupled with the task force to actually have dollars to do the good work that we know we need to do and, and you know, create some new best practices. So I'm, I'm pretty excited. It's going to be great.
Thank you, Ms. Forrest. Mr. Weisman?
Yes, a couple of things. Number one, Jeffrey, thank you very much for the, the detail as it relates to what Huron Valley students are going to receive through the bipartisanship that was displayed in Lansing. I think it's also very important and I, I applaud and respect the, the, the work and the presentation that Dr. Sala did because that was one of our conversations that we had in finance and operations. While it's nice to see 5 million, we as a, a board of education and members of the community really want to know what the effect is on our, our, our students and what opportunities our students are going to have. And I think your presentation really shows that. I think uh where we need to applaud this is it does provide those dollars to provide greater opportunities, greater support, but it also allows us to sustain some programs that we put in place this past year that we knew was extraordinarily important, but we really did it not knowing where the dollars were going to come from to sustain that. So I think that the, this is important and I appreciate the members of finance and operations um to uh provide that input, Amy and, and Lindsay, so that we could really zero it down to what does it mean to, to Huron Valley? And, and both of you together did a, did a great job with that. Um, you also mentioned that um part of our, I'll use the word instead of 11 T, COVID monies that we received, that's one-time-only money. And part of the 22, 23 budget does not even include about half of that. So that's not reflected in those, those numbers. I think it's important to note that our fund balance looks, looks pretty robust at 13.6 and I believe it's a little bit higher than even from a board perspective, we've set as a, as a, a goal to keep our fund balance around roughly 10% because it's really emergency funds that are available for those unexpected occurrences that might happen during the course of the year. And uh at the same time, it reduces the, the need to borrow because we also know that right now, we're not getting any money from the state to, to handle or will not be getting some money from the state even as the beginning of the school year starts because their fiscal year does not end on June 30th like school districts. It actually begins on October 1st. Correct, Jeffrey?
Yeah.
So there's a period of time that we need to have that fund balance. At the same time, I think it's also important to note that the fund balance increasing was by design because a number of these dollars that we're receiving or have received, especially the COVID money, was only one-time-only money that we had a spend down program in place. So this, somebody might say, well, geez, why, why aren't we using some more of that fund balance? We have it there. Well, it's a sustainability issue there. The other thing, um maybe you, either Jeffrey or Paul, you can explain once again to the community. Um, what's the difference between, you, you mentioned if you, on that one slide, that we received foundation allowance, we budgeted 300 and we got $450, which equated to a little over a million dollars. But all the other items are categorical. Can you give the difference between how categorical, categorical dollars differ from foundation dollars and how they can be utilized by the local school districts? I think it's important for that to be clarified once again.
I'm going to do this, Jeffrey?
It's up to you. Then we're both.
The, the foundation allowance dollars, Mr. Weisman, can be spent on any educational needs that we, that we determine as a school district, whereas categorical dollars have to be spent within the category that the dollars are named. So for example, 31A at-risk money, that additional $1,052 must be spent on the child that is at risk. It cannot be spent on a child that we would consider a general education that does not meet one of those qualifications or characteristics. And so the same would be true uh with the other categories as well. If we, if we have a child who's struggling with mental health, we have those one-time monies to meet the needs of that child, not all children that may not be struggling with the same, uh, same set of issues.
Okay. So you, so in a categorical, there's, there's, for lack of better terminology, there's some strings attached to it, correct?
Correct.
But the local school district, as long as it meets those strings, we, we have some decisions in administration and Coke, John and Paul and the rest of the team have opportunities to submit. This is how we're going to spend that money. And as long as the, it meets the, 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 the goal and the purpose of those dollars, that delivery might look a little bit different from one district to another. With foundation dollars, we have total basically control over how those dollars are being spent and how those, how those dollars equate to opportunities.
That's correct.
And then the last time we met as related to the, the proposed budget, we had two big factors out there that we didn't know about. It was the foundation and student, student enrollment. So we've got all that taken care of except student enrollment. And student enrollment is a, a significant driver because for every student we, we, we gain that walks through our doors, we get that foundation. And, and the reverse also holds true. So right now, we have an estimate based on a variety of sources as it relates to what that enrollment is. Correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
So it's extraordinarily important for us to continue uh spreading the good news and, and talking about the opportunities that, that our students in Huron Valley is going to receive next year and how robust that programming is going to be for us. So, and I do want, I also do want to say thank you to the community because without the community getting involved and reaching out, uh, this would not have happened. And I, I applaud our community and I certainly, I express my appreciation to our, to our leadership team and our, our staff as it relates to getting this done. So that's my treasurer's report also.
Oh, wow. A twofer.
It's a twofer.
Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to say, um, and, and it's a little bit of reiterating what Vice President Forrest had said is this allows us um to, to implement um some of those solutions that we worked so hardly, hard with, uh, the community, uh, the parents, the teachers and administrators uh with the task force uh this past year. So uh which will address literacy concerns, class sizes. I know that you guys were already addressing that issue, but it'll be able to directly um play an impact uh in a role in there. Um, and those are some of the areas of, of greatest needs uh in the district. So I'm very happy to see this uh as well. So thank you, Dr. Sala, Jeffrey, for the report. All right, with that, uh, student leadership, uh, they're on summer break, so um association comment. Um, Ms. Hollander mentioned that she was not be here. Board correspondence, Madam Secretary, any board correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
All right. Mr. Weisman, treasurer's report. I think you just provided it, but all right. Um, and then we'll go to reports from board committee. The executive committee uh has not met, although I think we're scheduled for the 21st. Is that correct? Uh, 21st of July.
Yes, that's correct.
So um, TLT committee.
Okay, this is my last TLT readout. Then we're handing it over to one of the Denises to go from here. So our last meeting was June 17th at 8:30 AM at the administration building. Uh, we called to order at 8:40. Present was, were myself, Ms. Cotter, Ms. Pistana, Mr. Traverney, Dr. Sala, Jennifer Bjorkman, Mr. Lindberg, Lena Nemeth, Terry Thompson, Jessica Cohen, and Tori Wy sink. Hope I did that right. We had no public comment. Um, regular agenda items, we talked about the benchmark data report. Um, uh, Ms. Nemeth gave the benchmark data report for math and reading by students in grades K through eight uh as required by PA 48, section 104A. It was noted that students on all levels have shown growth in both math and reading, meeting target goals. It was also noted that students in each subgroup, including English language learners, economically disadvantaged, and students with IEPs showed growth as well. At all levels, Huron Valley students are trending close to or above pre-pandemic normed levels. This data will be shared at a future regular board meeting. Uh, the GSRP calendar with the GSRP program receiving full foundation allowance for each student, the district and association reached an agreement on a new calendar for the 2023 school, 23 school year. The calendar reflects teachers moving to full-time status with an increase in student days and also provides for teacher planning, parent-teacher conferences, home visits, and professional learning as required. Uh, board policy 5,000, um, student progress reporting and activities. The committee reviewed policy 5, 4, 6, 0 graduation requirements and discussed how to clarify alternative options for students to meet graduation requirements specifically for world language and math. Administration will review and bring recommendations, which I think we'll hear about this evening. Uh, we also continue with board policy 2,000, mission goals and program. The committee will continue to review um these policies within the 2,000 series. Education services and resources, Mr. Traverney distributed uh the educational services and resource policies within the 2,000 series. These policies will be reviewed at a future meeting. Uh, other consent agenda items, um, tonight we will see, I believe it's tonight, we will see the elementary iPad purchase. Um, Mr. Wy sink shared plans to replace existing iPads with a classroom set of iPads for each elementary building. This, uh, these devices will be part of the stream and technology class to allow for additional multimedia pre-engineering and literacy applications. In addition, a charging cart, protective cases, and management license are planned. The committee supported moving this to unfinished business at the July 11th meeting. Future meetings, the next TLT meeting is scheduled or was scheduled for July 27th, 22 at 3:30 PM. And I believe we're still good to go with that. We adjourned at 10:59 AM and uh we will see it with new committee members on the 27th.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. All right, we will move along. Finance and operations committee, Mr. Weisman?
Yes, the finance and operations meeting was held on July 8th, 2022. Uh, meeting began at 8:33 AM in administrative office. In attendance was myself, along with member Cotter, member Grisinkowski, along with Dr. Sala, Mr. Van Goghson, Mr. Rebe, and Ms. Maruskin. Uh, public comments, there were none. We reviewed the minutes of the previous meeting on 6:10 and uh the minutes were, were included within the board notes. The regular agenda consisted of a review of the consent agenda items that are before us, along with unfinished business. Uh, one of the discussions was our playground equipment that was brought forth uh under new business at the last board meeting. We are, as a committee, uh recommending that the Board of Education awards Snyder Recreation Incorporated the contract for new playground equipment for all eight of our elementary schools in the amount of $1,073,200 and a contingency of $56,000 for uns, for seen items. The project will be funded through the 2020 capital project fund. And I will also note, I, uh, committee really appreciates the fact that Ms. Cotter and, and Ms. Pistana had an opportunity to go visit uh Rochester Community Schools to take a look and kick the tires uh as it related to this new playground equipment. Report was that we were very excited and Ms. Cotter um was able to test personally some of the playground equipment, I understand. And you were her spotter, correct, Ms. Pistana? Okay. Yes. Uh, new business, board policy 6,000 series. We're asking the board to approve the 6,000 series finance policies at the October, or October, August 10th board education meeting. Others, we also received from distribution from Mr. Van Goghson, the 8,000 series policies, which we will review and the September 7th finance and operations meeting. We had an opportunity uh with Mr. Van Goghson to share the budget committee, budget uh that was presented tonight, along with the state budget impacts on Huron Valley schools. In addition to that, we had a discussion regarding a clean bus program, clean bus program as it relates to uh electrical buses, uh, and what possibilities are there out there as it relates to grants through DTE for um schools to have electric buses and we're going to continue to pursue them. We're also looking at our co-op uh as it relates to creating and authoring a draft bid so that we can take, become a leader in that initiative. Um, I, I ask that we'd like to know what it takes to be a test site and get some trial electric buses possibly uh for us to utilize. Mr. Wolford, who's a partner with us, will join us at our August 10th meeting where we'll have further discussions. Uh, we discuss our meeting dates and times. We'll be meeting at nine o'clock on Wednesdays, each Wednesday prior to each board of education meeting. Further discussion items, Dr. Sala spoke of the initial overview in regards to contracts being drawn up with the West Oakland Transportation Authority, which is a service that is being provided to the West Oakland area as it relates to our seniors. Uh, this opportunity is to work in partnership with WODA uh to offset some of their costs by utilizing our mechanics. And in addition to that, it will also provide us an opportunity to have a strong connection with our senior population. At that point in time, our meeting was adjourned at 9:30 and then we went on a, a roadshow where we had an opportunity to visit uh construction sites uh within bid five, which included Heritage, Apollo, and Spring Mills. Our next board me, our next uh finance and operations meeting is August 10th, 2022 at nine o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Communications, marketing, and legislative.
We have not met since our last meeting, but maybe we can powl out after this to come up with a day and time.
Okay, great. All right. Um, before we move to a, a public comment, I just wanted to uh mention, um, I think it's important to point out that last year, together as a board, we discussed ways to capture our parents' voices, their engagement and their involvement, uh, to hear their concerns other than just through public comment. Uh, we launched last year, community forums as a mechanism to do this. Two community forums each quarter. Uh, these forums were well attended uh last year with the exception of one that took place in May, but other than that, uh, all of them were, were well attended uh by community members and parents. Um, we will continue uh that effort to, to reach out and allow um, and to make ourselves available to our community to hear them, not only in, in a formal structure with public comment, but more of a one-on-one back and forth is very valuable uh to this board. And I think each, each member uh can attest uh to that. Um, we also, last year, asked parents to come forward and join teachers and administrators to address and be part of a task force to address three things. One was the widening gap um in social and emotional learning that was caused by the COVID pandemic. The other was the widening gaps in learning, learn that was ca, uh, caused by COVID pandemic. And the third thing was preparing our students uh for a new economy. Um, and we got our report out um from the communities. As you've uh heard, Ms. Forrest mentioned some of those solutions. Dr. Sala had a report out on that. So we got a lot of great feedback from our parents or teachers and administrators. Um, and all in an effort to make sure that we're involving and engaging um our parents in the community and making sure that we're hearing all of their voices. Um, tonight, uh, what I would like to do is introduce uh to, to this board, um, is that we would like to create, and I'll, I'll work with the board from now until the next meeting to, to get the finer details. Um, but to create a committee um that speaks to the communication uh to parents in this district with some specific objectives to make sure, um, because we do have different generations of parents in the district and we need to, we need to evolve as a school district um and make sure that we are communicating um in, in not just one mode or medium, but multiple modes and mediums uh that reach the parents and where they're at. Um, we want to make sure that we're welcomed, uh, connected and that, uh, involved. We want to make sure that we're communicating clearly and effectively, uh, and effectively is from a transparent perspective, not in regards to trying to hide information. But as you heard from Mr. Weisman, as well as Ms. Dodd tonight, a follow-up of asking questions. Like any organization, we can get stuck in our verbiage and our words and that can be confusing uh to parents, grandparents, and guardians uh of our students. So we want to continue to reach out uh in that. So we want to continue to reach out in that, in that vein to address those issues. We also would like this new committee to review the current parent systems that we have in place. The PTAs, the PTOs, the, the athletic and art booster clubs, the district parent council. Are these entities working for our parents? Maybe they are, and if they are, that's great. But if there's something that needs to be corrected, then we want to know that is, is well, so that will be one of the objectives. And to make recommendations to this board on what improvements can be made in regards to the communication. So it's my desire to ask a couple of board members that might have kids in the district to maybe co chair this, but I'll, I'll work after this meeting to figure out that. And then we will also be looking to have PTO and PTA presidents or their designees from each of the buildings to be representative. Of course, this group will work very closely in a lot of ways, hand to hand, be a working group with the strategic planning committee. And one of those five committees, right, is a communication committee as well. So we don't want to be redundant in our operations. We want to be efficient, but I think there's an opportunity for us to really reach out, to have a survey of the parents, to capture their voices, to make sure that we're meeting them where they're at and, and to understand if adjustments need to be made, where they need to be made. We continue to lean in. It's important for us to get our parents involved and engaged. And of course, COVID put us in a kind of a freeze mode for a while and, and we've been able to fire the engines back up and get parents back in the buildings. But just like everything else that happened from a supply chain issue, there's a supply chain issue here as well. So how do, how do we reignite and get parents involved? And those parents, single parents especially, that might have a difficult time getting involved, how do we meet them where they're at as well? So, so more to come on this, work out some of the finer details. We had a great ad hoc committee last year, the AAA committee that was chaired by Vice President Forrest that came up with some solutions and some ideas and, and those have been turned over to finance and operations and marketing and some of the others in TLT. And so in that same vein, we'll look at this ad hoc committee to, to produce a report. The difference in this had a committee though, is that the majority of the members on this committee will be parents, not, not board members. So there's, there's a, a difference from that perspective, but I just wanted to make sure that we know that we're continuing to reach out to our parents in the community to make sure that they're getting involved and that we hear their voices. So I want to make sure that we continue to say that. I know a lot of parents are busy and appreciate the feedback that I've received from them. All right, we will move to public comment and I don't, Lori, do you have any public comment? I have no public comment that's been turned in. Is there any public comment? No public comment. All right, we will move, move forward to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items A1 through A5 as presented. Support.
All right, a motion's been made by Ms. Dodd, supported by Ms. Grisimkowsky. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'll oppose. Ayes have it. Motion carries consent agenda is approved as presented. We'll now move to unfinished business, superintendent evaluation. So I just, you have the three boxer on this, so the superintendent, it's his right to ask for a closed session and he exercised that right. We, we as a Board of Education met with Dr. Sala on June 13th. Is that correct? Yeah, I believe it was, June 13th. And we discussed the 34 indicators that make up the superintendent's evaluation. The Board of Education determined that Dr. Sala performed at a high level throughout the entire school year and rated Dr. Sala as highly effective. Based on the highly effective rating and the overall performance throughout the past four years, the Board of Education is bringing a contract extension for consideration, which employs the superintendent during the 2022, 23 school year, which is the one we're in right now, 23, 24, 24, 25, 25, 26 and 26, 27. This commences on July 1st, 2022 and terminates on June 30th, 2027. So that is the motion to approve that rating and that contract extension at this time.
Any second down?
All right, motion's been made by Mr. Carlson, supported by Mr. Weisman. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing them, we'll, oh, are you sure?
Say, you know, all in all, we really appreciate the work you're doing and appreciate what you, what you do to work with the community, parents, students, the staff. We, we appreciate that work, so thank you. That was all I wanted to say.
Oh, that's not, you know, all you wanted to say. That was great. So I appreciate that. Yeah, and, and the team that you have and that you've assembled. And I know that some folks have, have moved on as well and you're putting some other butts in the seats to, to help move the district forward, but you've got a great team and congratulations and thank you for the hard work this past school year. Any other comments before we move for a vote? Ms. Cotter.
Just real quick, and this is more for the viewing audience. Again, Paul has done a wonderful job for us, but the tool that we use, I think, has been very effective and the board worked very well with it and covers so many areas that with respect, with respect to that, I think our board did a nice job in your evaluation. You made it easy for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Lindsay, for bringing that up. I think it's important to, to mention too, this isn't, you know, it's consensus building that the Michigan Association of School Board requires during, during this evaluation process. So one board member can't sit there and give ones when everybody else is giving fours or vice versa. There needs to be explanation and thoughtfulness in regards to if somebody's giving Dr. Sala one, you know, what's, what's the evidence for that? It can't be just in an effort and an attempt to, to create averages and manipulate the system. So to Ms. Cotter's point, I, I really appreciate, there was dialogue. Not everybody was on the exact same page, but you know, fairly close, but we had good conversations in regards to why people felt certain ways. And that's the kind of feedback that a leader, a CEO of a large organization, one of the largest in top 25 in Oakland County deserves and needs in order to continue to improve. So thank you, Ms. Cotter, for bringing that up. All right, we'll move for a roll call vote.
All right, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Weisman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Grisimkowsky.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
I'm a yes and Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
All right, sufficient voting in the affirmative, motion passes. All right, we'll now move to item B, board policy 5000 series. Dr. Sala.
Thank you, Ed Turner. This one over to Mr. Traverne.
Yeah, thank you so much. So as reported earlier by Ms. Dodd, the TLT committee has been working on the 5000 series. It is made up of the health services, enrollment, student progress reporting and student activities. So that's kind of a broad umbrella of, of policies. Just walking back a little bit, the first set of policies covering enrollment, health services was shared with the TLT committee back on April 22nd. It was reviewed on May 6th and again on May 20th. And then also we looked at the student progress reporting activities policies. Those are first shared with the committee back on May 6th and reviewed again on May 20th and June 1st. Those did come before the board under new business for a first read at the June 6th meeting and there was some conversations and discussion about some of the policies specifically, I believe 5460 with graduation requirements. And so the TLT committee spent some time looking at 5460 at our last meeting and it was recommended that we look at specific language for, again, what options students have for meeting the math and also the world language requirements within, within those graduation requirements. So we've added some language to really make sure that students understand that working with their counselor and, and reaching out with the student support team is available to them as well as resources within our, our course books are available. So that recommendation was made at our last TLT meeting to bring the 5000 series back to the board this evening under unfinished, unfinished business. So this is a second read tonight, but again, we know that there's been a lot of, of discussion and conversation. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time, also I know there've been questions about sort of what things have we discussed at committee specific to some of the policies? And we've looked at, and I shared with the board previously, some of these things around board policy 5111 and looking at language that's, was included for undocumented immigrants. Board policy 5122 was really around an area for post graduate studies and since Huron Valley Schools doesn't have that program, we were able to remove that policy as it really didn't apply. So those are just some of the examples that we discussed, but certainly know that the board may want to consider or have some additional conversations around these policies. And when we talked at the TLT committee, we knew that, that language that was being recommend, recommended specifically for 5460 would be something that we could review this evening. And so while it is under unfinished business, it would certainly up to the board whether or not to take action on it tonight or to review those policies, certainly happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Hey, John, can you walk through the changes in 5460 specifically?
Yeah. So again, 5460 is the, is graduation requirements, the questions that were asked were around world language and math. We also looked at what option, other options may exist for students specifically around the personal curriculum. We also looked at things like financial literacy. We know that there was some action taken by the legislature and, and the governor recently about financial literacy that'll impact, I believe, this year's eighth graders, next year's freshmen coming forward. So we also looked at the requirement for four years of math and that is something that is in the district policy currently 5127, but was not necessarily a requirement under the MMC that students are required to have four, four credits of math, but don't necessarily have to be all within high school. So we know a number of our students do take algebra in eighth grade and so there was some discussion around that. So the requirement for four years of math was determined to be desirable to ensure that students don't miss a year of math, specifically ensuring that students are prepared for the SAT. So when we look at students that may not take that fourth year of math, it's often students that are taking algebra in eighth grade. So that was some dialogue that we had, some discussion that we had at, at TLT and, and that was, that was really the, the recommendation there. The world language requirement has many alternatives. One of the options, of course, is the American Sign Language course. We know that students can also take programming. We have principles of programming as part of our CT programs that can count for world language. We also looked at the personal curriculum, again, I mentioned, and how is modified to include clarity for students to be able to access options or alternatives through the personal curriculum options. So we added some language to board policy 5460 there. As it relates to financial literacy, I think more needs to be done, specifically what, what courses cover the curriculum standards to meet those requirements? Is it a separate course that students will have to take or is that something that's already embedded within our course content and, and sequence that students would be able to meet that requirement? That's work that we need to do. So we know that we'll always have that option to come back and revisit those, those conversations at a later date.
So are there any questions or comments? I have a few here, but so just help me understand what's changed on the mathematics? So if somebody takes it in eighth grade and then takes freshman, sophomore and junior, does that qualify as four years of math or were you saying that all four years need to be in high school?
So right now, we have a, our board policy says that students will need to take four years of math in high school.
Right.
The, it also says the Michigan Mer curriculum requires students to take math in their senior year. So if a student takes algebra in eighth grade, really the year that they would not have to take math would be in the freshman, sophomore and junior year. Most typically, it's in the junior year. That's also the year that students take the SAT. So the feedback from our curriculum committees and our teacher leaders was that if students aren't in a math class, that has, that can have an impact and often does have an impact on their ability to successfully complete the SAT or at a level that, that we would expect them to. So the recommendation is to maintain that four years of math and that was really the thinking and the reasoning behind that within the, the board, within the graduation requirements within the board policy.
Yeah. So, so this is, this is where I want to push a little bit. So a parent that might not understand mathematic requirements or look at this might think they're wedded to algebra, geometry, algebra II and so forth. That's why I think it's very important. I know if they can find the same curriculum that I found, although I've been sitting on the board for 14 years, I didn't find it. I knew it was out there, but I eventually found it. What I'm saying is, this is exactly the point. We've got to make sure that parents become advocates for their children. There are some parents that are very involved and quite honestly, we don't have as many counselors as we should have in, in our high schools, just because of funding in the past and so forth. So they have a lot of, we might have three counselors per, per high school and they've got a lot of kids to manage. So if you have two parents that are very involved, you're going to make sure that you're helping build the right kind of curriculum for your child and that's fantastic. What I'm worried about is that child who struggles with math and math isn't, isn't, you know, their forte, that they know what the options are. And, and maybe the counselors are pointing that out to them, but you know, that's the piece that I think we want to, we want to address and, and the financial literacy, the financial literacy to me is life skills. We need to figure out as a high school, not as a high school, as a school district, for all of our high schools of how to make sure that these life skills of our kids, how to communicate, how to communicate face to face, eye to eye. I mean, we, we seem like that that's like a no brainer, but it's, it's not taking place. And so financial literacy, kids need to know, you know, what an interest rate is and how much, you know, it's going to cost to pay for a car or, or the budgeting that needs to take place. These are important, I think, life skills. And I know, you know, I, I'm not saying that you don't recognize this. I know that, that you do, John. But I, I think I want to see us as a school district really try to reach out and, and kind of morph this as opposed to being exactly the way that, that it is here. You know, what can we do that's a little bit different? I know that we provide the online electives too. And maybe it isn't in the policy, maybe it's another aspect of the communication. Maybe it speaks to the marketing area and department of how we get that involved. But this is the policy where people go to and I think we need to make sure that we're really highlighting, like if I read this and didn't understand the asterisks and maneuvering around, I might not realize that accounting one and accounting two, taking my senior year counts as a math credit, which is speaking to business literacy and, and number literacy. And, and I know that it's there, but I think we need to figure out how, how we blend it in the policy more. So the other, I guess it's more of a comment than, than a question, the world language. So is it possible that a student could take Spanish one in seventh grade and Spanish two in eighth grade? Is that possible today?
Right now, Spanish one is typically taken by eighth graders because of the elective programming within the middle school. So while I say technically it's possible, we always look at students' needs and, and make those options available. It is not typical. Usually students would take Spanish in their eighth grade year because of the, the elective requirements within middle school.
Yeah, and the Michigan Department of Education does allow for that two years to take place and I believe it's K through 12, not just six through 12.
That is correct.
So, okay, so, so is that an adjustment or was that always in place and it's just a product of only offering Spanish one in, in the middle school?
Right, so that is, that is in place, that is an option for students now and it is a, again, as you look at the board policy, we have that under the asterisks that, that really says these, it denotes. really says these, it denotes that there's alternative options for students to meet those requirements, specifically the the social studies, the physical education, the world language, the math, there are different areas where they're able to do that. Some of the feedback that we heard, and we talked about this at the committee, was that oftentimes for those students like that you're speaking about may not have the resources and may not have the understanding, reading either board policy, which frankly, most students don't read, they're looking at the course book, right? That outlines that the students that may be struggling getting to graduation or not getting graduate, getting the credits that are needed to get to graduation, that's really where our counselors are are stepping in and really making sure that students know what options are available, what makes most sense for them on their career path moving forward. And so that that was something that was a recognition. But I hear you, and how do we make sure that that's clearly defined and available for everybody to to understand that, whether it's through our board policy or also within our our course catalog or course books that really students are using when they're when they're scheduling and doing those course requests year after year?
Yeah.
I can I just add something here? I think the policy in and of itself covers all aspects of what we're trying to accomplish, but I think what what you're getting to, Mr. Carlson, is how does every child know what their opportunities are? You know, and board policy, I think, can be a challenging mechanism to communicate a more straightforward, simple message that really takes, in many instances, a one-on-one conversation or some literature that's a pamphlet that's easier to understand, that that isn't jargon-y, that isn't legalese, that isn't compliance, that isn't all the things that board policy often looks like. And so it's striking, you know, striking the balance of, okay, we have to meet the law, we have to have the compliance piece in place, but that said, we also need to inspire and build futures, one student at a time, and that means one-on-one conversations, and that means not putting everyone on, you're on this track or you're on this track. It's, it's really having the genuine conversation and how do we do that? And so we we recognize that it's hard to accomplish that through policy, and while there have been a couple of tweaks or modifications here, we kept coming back to the how important the role of the counselor is, how important the role of the literature is that's given to students. I know the course catalog can be somewhat dense, too. You've got, you know, 300 classes, right? And each class is a paragraph, and you're going through that and really trying to sift through, what is, what does all of this mean? And so it it almost feels to me like we need something that that works in tandem with. And we're not saying, you know, to the board this evening, you should adopt this policy. If you, if the board wants to have some additional conversation, you know, we're absolutely open to that thinking or idea and ideas. I'm just wondering if, if maybe, maybe we we continue to have that conversation, but there's an, there's an accompanying
Yeah.
tool or resource.
Well, there's nothing that precludes this board from passing any of the policies that we've passed and come back at a future board meeting and making amendments and modifications. So I'm, I'm okay with moving forward with this policy tonight. I think what's important, and it's important to any organization, you have policies, you have process, and you have procedures, and there needs to be alignment. And I think that there's a realignment that needs to take place somewhat in in this area. And it might be more with procedures, it may be process than it is with policy. But I would like to, at some point in time, get engaged, and we'll work with the T L T committee, Ms. Pistana and and the committee, to talk about, you know, how do we integrate life skills and point those out? We can call them electives, but I think that there's some life skills that should be requirements, and financial literacy is one of them. I think we're doing a great disservice to our students that are having to take on huge amounts of debt at college and assuming that they might have taken, you know, trigonometry and so forth, but they might not have the basics. Now, they're probably smart enough to figure it out if they took trig, but nonetheless, I think, I think we we need to be vigilant in in helping with this. So I I'm supportive of passing the policy tonight.
One more thought, I'm sorry, Mr. Carlson, just one more thought here. I think another thing just to keep in mind, and this is for the board as well as the administration and the community to hear, you know, as we go into strategic planning, this is a wonderful opportunity for us as a school district to think about things like block scheduling, like trimesters. I I think, I I think we need to let everything be available to us, because in some of those models, we can do exactly what you're talking about. We very easily make, you know, 23, 24, 25 credits a requirement to graduate, and that really does allow students more opportunities to take classes that are outside of the 18 M M C classes, and they can complete that within a traditional school year. There's a lot we can do. Some of those things cost money. And so we've, we've, because we've been base foundation since the beginning of of time and because we've had to to operate within the budget constraints that we've had, but now I think things are a little different, and I think we can look a little more creatively at at some of these things. So I think there's a real opportunity to to get at what we're trying to accomplish here, and I think the kids will benefit as a result. Sorry to jump in there, I just had to.
I should probably ask for a motion first before we continue on with the.
I can make a motion. Hold on, I'm going to do it the right way with the right, the right everything. I'd move that the Board of Education approve board policy 5,000 series as presented.
I'll support.
All right. Made by the outgoing Chair of T L T and supported by the incoming Chair of the T L T. All right, any other questions or comments?
Yes, President Carlson. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Dodd and Mr. Weisman.
Yeah, I just want to say, I like the idea of making sure we revisit this specific policy, because we love revisiting this policy. I think we've done it maybe seven times this year. But as part of strategic planning, I think that that really digging into it, and I have spent some time in the course book, and I think, you know, maybe that's something we can look at in tandem with T L T and the Communication Committee to figure out, are there some tools and resources and ways to help? I also think we have three counselors, but we also have an entire staff of people that the students talk to and look for, look to for help. So making sure that the the staff and faculty all understand how to navigate this and what what's easily done and what's more challengingly done, because I think many students look for that support, not so much from their counselor, but from some of their trusted math teachers, trusted people, to make sure that everybody's on the same page as to what can and can't be done.
Okay, great. Mr. Weisman?
I guess I could just say ditto to that, but I do appreciate the fact that, as you were talking, Mr. Carlson, President Carlson and Dr. Sala, the strategic planning process that we're going to follow is just an absolutely wonderful time to do that. At the same time, I know that a few years ago, I was on the committee, the secondary committee, and we really took a look at the course curriculum and or the the catalog and made that more relevant, more user-friendly. I think it really, the sign, the 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 skill there is to be able to communicate that and to bring that back to the parents and and the students for them to understand the various options that they have. And at the same time, while we're going through the strategic plan, there is a sense of urgency to put some of these things in place as 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 quickly as we can, because we talk about rigor and we talk about relevancy. We talk about putting together an ad hoc committee as it relates to getting parents involved. I think there's great opportunities for us to get our students involved so that they understand and they they take ownership as it relates to that and that true partnership with the parents, because there again, that communication with the parents and students is a way of getting our parents involved at the middle school and high school. There's a significant need to do that. At the same time, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to provide opportunities for our students by creating a a brand, what makes Huron Valley special? Why, why should I have my children come to Huron Valley? Because, well, Huron Valley provides a variety of opportunities, because I understand what they they provide at the secondary level. I think it's also important for us to be taking a look at just the heart, the 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 nuts and bolts of what we provide, including when we start school, when we end school, when we have zero hour, when we have seven hour. We we not only meet the needs, as you talked about, President Carlson, as it relates to our parents and the various generational diversity, but we also recognize the diversity of our students and meet the needs of our students where they are and recognize that their their days are much different than they were just 10 years ago. Okay? And so it's twofold. There's an urgency to do some things right away, to make certain that our students know what those opportunities are, but at the same time, create that framework within our strategic plan.
Thank you. Ms. Pistana.
Just a question, John. Have we gotten any recommendations from the state that's told us anything about the financial literacy? Is that coming down? Is there a date that we have to?
Yeah, we haven't heard anything yet. Obviously, this is pretty fresh, pretty new. We anticipate that the Michigan Department of Education will be reviewing that and making some recommendations on what standards would be included as part of that financial literacy requirement, and then would be looking at our existing programming and determining what makes sense going forward.
Like fall time, you're thinking? Okay, thanks.
Ms. Forrest.
Going back to the math issues, you know, I will approve the 5,000 series, knowing that we will have continued discussions on kind of fleshing out all the possibilities that are within those four credits. I have looked on the M D E website and their their particulars there. They do kind of flesh it out as to all the the myriad of classes that are acceptable to get credits in mathematics. And I think the more that we can, as everyone has said, explain that in, you know, a simple, concise way to everybody that will be taking math classes in our schools in the future would be helpful. But then again, and then everybody has to be, you know, have that kind of little cheat sheet and be on the same page. The district this size, you know, sometimes there is some information that kind of gets morphed into a little something that it's not. So, you know, I think education for this is going to be kind of a, kind of important.
Any other comments? Ms. Grisimskowski.
Just one comment for Mr. Travernia. How do we communicate to parents the, the graduation requirements? I mean, I'm, I'm kind of one of those moms, I'm just like, four years of math, four years of science, four years of English, and think you have to take some language, you got rid of some of that in middle school. But, I mean, how do we communicate that? Because I'm wondering if we just need to bring our communication into the 21st century? Maybe it needs to be part of our website, maybe it needs to be an app, something, and I know that's a little bit getting into the weeds, but from a parent's standpoint, if you are on track to be an A P scholar, if you are on track to go to college, four electives is nothing. You you barely have an opportunity to explore what could be. And so I'm just kind of curious how we communicate this, because I do have a student at Lakeland. Admittedly, we came in in 2020, but how was that communicated? Because I don't remember.
Yeah, the the tool that we use primarily is the course, the course book. And so we, a few years ago, and and Mr. Weisman mentioned, as part of our secondary task force, we really recognized that having a common course book for all of our high schools was needed, because at that time, we had a different course, course book or a course catalog at Milford High School than than what was available at Lakeland High School. And we knew that there was programming offered at each building that was unique in some areas, and then a lot of commonalities between the buildings. So as an outcome of that work, we have a course book for all of our high school programming, and within it, you'll see programs that are available at Milford, programs that are available at Lakeland. It also works through the E D P. Every student is required to have an E D P or educational development plan. And so between the E D P, working with counselors, and looking at the course book, those really are the communication tools for students to know if they're on track for graduation and and meeting graduation requirements. So again, that might be something that parents aren't seeing on a regular basis. It is on our website, is it both the district, you know, under the teaching and learning tab, as well as both high schools have that under the counseling tab. That is our primary, I would say, method of communication to parents specifically about what those requirements entail. But again, I think the the conversation this evening is is really good and helpful, and I think can be part of our strategic plan to move forward, is what does that look like going forward? And how do we make sure that everybody has a clear understanding, those that have resources and those that may not, to be able to understand what options are out there? And one of the things I think is a point of pride for Huron Valley is there are many. We have a lot of different ways for students to meet graduation requirements through various programming in our schools, and I think it's, it really is a celebration. And it's something until you really sit down and you look at the course catalog, it's now laid out by Career Pathway, so students can look at sample schedules, four-year schedules on courses that they might take, see where opportunities exist for various elective programming. So that is, it does exist, it is in that, that, that work, but it's how do we communicate that out? How, what's the best method to make sure that everybody's aware of that and they have an opportunity to review that in in very different forms?
Yeah, the the course registration form as well, that
Yes, absolutely.
Each student gets it every year.
That they submit.
So I think that's a really important piece, Amy. You know, you're an incoming freshman, you have your schedule, Algebra one is filled in for you, or if you've taken Algebra one, geometry is filled in for you, you have to take that, it is a graduation requirement. And so you get to the bottom of that course registration form, and you've got two blanks. That means, you know, you have two electives you take. You open the course catalog, I go straight to the electives page, and then you you have more freedoms as you go through. So, you know, that's the primary mechanism, and if your children or anything like my children, they stop showing it to me after the sophomore year, and they end up begging for it, so.
Well, they also utilize a tool called Zello, and that it's, it's part of that E D P process, but Zello is a application allows students to explore many different career pathways, find out what their interests are, what their passions are.
Zello, not Zelli.
Zello. Not Zello, no. So that's another tool that students use on a regular basis to help inform as they're making those.
And I think that's, that's really what I'm kind of driving, i- is from a parent's perspective, this is really about career pathing, and it's about financial decisions. I rather, I rather our students in Huron Valley have good, strong conversations about career pathing, as you mentioned, in sixth and seventh grade than in 10th or 11th, because if they get on a career path and say, I'm going to be an engineer and take all these math classes in high school and get to their freshman or sophomore year and decide, well, I'm switching careers now. Now you've just cost the family or yourself tens of thousands of dollars. So let's, let's have kids really understand what career pathing is and to take control and and help communicate that with parents. I think that's really, at the end of the day, has has been, you know, my concern about this is is career pathing, and we discussed that with the task force. We had some folks come in and and talk to us about, you know, how do we make sure that we're preparing our kids for the new economy? And I, I, I think structuring it differently, not waiting to ninth grade, getting them in sixth grade, getting them to think about that, getting them about building their schedule is where where we need to go. So I welcome that conversation in the strategic planning as well, and if there are no other comments, we'll go ahead and move for a roll call vote.
Ms. Dodd? Yes. I'm a yes. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Weisman?
Yes.
Ms. Grisimskowski?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
And Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Guys, have it.
All right. Board policy 5,000 is passed. We'll now move to iPad purchases. Can I get a motion on this first, and then I'll go ahead for an explanation?
I'll move that the Board of Education approve the iPad purchases as presented.
And I'll support that.
Moved by Ms. Dodd, supported by Ms. Cotter. Turn that over to Mr. Travernia.
Yeah, again, as Ms. Dodd shared at the committee report, Mr. Wasink shared that as we move towards one-to-one, and this fall, we're really excited, we will be a one-to-one district for all students, J K through 12th grade, with Chromebook carts in every classroom, which is fantastic, that's been many years coming. But it really gives us an opportunity to look at our programming within our stream, which is our science, technology, engineering, reading, arts, and math program as an elective program for students at the elementary level and kindergarten. And then we also have technology as an elective or a special as well at the elementary level for grades one through five. So we're really looking at having iPads in all of those classrooms, so students have access to the technology and the applications and the experiences that are made available available by having iPads in the classroom. So this purchase is for a classroom set of of iPads, it would be in each of our elementary buildings, and it'd be a part of the stream and the technology, of course, is moving forward.
Well, I'll open it up for any questions or comments, but I first want to say congratulations, Mr. Travernia. You and I attended a a conference. Mr. Tervernier. You and I attended a, a conference back in 2012 with the superintendent, the deputy superintendent yourself at the time, and a couple of other board members. And our sole focus at that point in time was how to integrate technology more in Huron Valley School District. And of course, some of us, I think one of the sessions you and I jointly attended together was one-to-one. And we both looked at each other and said, unfortunately, we don't have the funds to do that as a district. But a lot of good learnings have come through that, through that process of attending that conference. But here we are 10 years later. We made it. Nice job. Way to keep your eyes on the target. So congratulations to you. Any other comments? Ms. Dodd.
Just to clarify, one-to-one means one device to one student. So there's no more sharing unless, you know, they want to.
No more sharing or having to wait until the technology's available, or, you know, who's got the cart today, or is it down the hall? And so every one of our classrooms will have, will have a cart available with technology available for all students to use.
Hate to say no sharing. That violates one of the kindergarten principles, doesn't it, Ms. Cotter, about sharing that you learned in kindergarten? Mr. Wiseman?
Yes, I too wanted to say congratulations. It's a big step. It's a milestone. But what's also exciting is, is the technology that's now being implemented and integrated into our curriculum by our teachers and what this bond issue has meant as it relates to bringing our classrooms to the 21st century with our technology. So I also applaud our administration and our, our teaching leader, teacher leaders as it relates to that and our community supporting that. That's a big piece, too.
I would say that I think one of the things that we learned in, in education was the value of technology and the opportunities that technology afforded. And I think that was really a result of the pandemic and not something we were all looking forward to. And, and I mean, for teachers that spend countless hours changing their, their lessons and their units and looking at instructional delivery models and how to leverage technology to make that happen. We were able to do that. But now that we're back in person and face to face, we see teachers utilizing that technology more and more every day. So that, that was a positive outcome, I would say, as it relates to the use of technology in the classroom. But there's always more new emerging technology, things that are happening that are exciting. And so, you know, we're happy to bring, continue to bring those, those forward to our students.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move for a roll call vote.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Grizankowski.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
I'm a yes. And Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Excellent.
Sufficient voting and the affirmative motion passes. We'll now move to approval of the playground equipment. Can I get a motion, Mr. Wiseman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to the Board of Education to approve the recommendation as it relates to providing the funds to, to equip our eight elementary schools with playground equipment as stated within the three boxer that's in before us.
And Ms. Cotter, would you like to support that motion? I know you've been on the merry-go-round and so forth.
Yes, I'd like to support that motion.
All right. All right. Any questions or comments? Ms. Pastana.
So there has been extensive discussion about playground equipment. And this kind of is close to my heart because we put in a lot of playground equipment when my son was young. Spring Mills has it still. So first off, I just wanted to make sure that everything was done the way that we thought it should be done. We were going with a new company. I, I wanted to see. So I sent my MNO guy, which was my husband, out to the church. And he took a look and took a bunch of pictures, and it led to some questions and some concerns. And so then my wonderful board friend, Ms. Cotter, called me up and she said, let's take a road trip, a field trip, and we'll go out and check out all the equipment at the Rochester Hills Community School. So on July 1st, we got in the car and went to five different elementary schools. We tried the equipments. We looked at the ground cover. We looked at bolts. There are pictures to show. We, they had old Burke equipment and new Burke equipment. So we got to kind of compare it as well. Here's a video. There's Ms. Cotter on the coolest piece of equipment. It was, I mean, you need an incredible amount of room, but it was a cool piece of equipment. It was, and then, there she is. And then she took one of me. It was really fun. And I don't really like stuff like that, but it was fun. I have a chicken, that's right. So anyway, long story short, the equipment looked great. We compared the old with the new. We had, we spent a good amount of time out there. And I'm really glad that she made the suggestion to go out there because that was the right thing for us to do. So, so of course, I, I now feel very supportive of it. What I would encourage is that each building pick the structure that best fits their student population. And I know it's going to be principals and parents and maybe kids involved. But they need to pick the right structure for them. And the only other thing that I would say is, we need to make sure that the third-party subcontractors that are installing this equipment are crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, and just making sure that equipment is properly maintained, which I think our own MNO will, will end up doing. But I'll throw it to Ms. Cotter because she may have something to say about it, too.
Well, yes, I'm glad we did go on our field trip. It was fun. Myself and Denise, we've both have had experience in the past where we've, we've purchased playground equipment for the schools we were involved with. So we thought it was necessary. Prior to this, we had many questions, and we gave Jeffrey a long to-do list. And he came back with a number of excellent responses. I was really impressed with the warranties that we're getting with this. So we went ahead to check it all out based on everything that Jeffrey was able to answer for us. So we really appreciated that. The other thing that we noticed that I enjoyed, and Denise pointed out, is that we saw playground equipment, some that's been in there for years, and it wasn't dated. But the newer installations, starting like around 2018, they're all dated to the day that they were installed. So we were able to compare and look to see how they were weathering and the maintenance on them. The other thing, I gave Denise a quick, a quick lesson on what engineered wood chips look like. I picked up a handful and showed her how they all meshed together. So overall, it was a good experience. We feel good about the selection. And again, I want to thank the team that worked together to get us the answers that we needed. But being there, touching it, seeing it. Unfortunately, we didn't show you all the photos, but we did have a good time. And that one, that one, we only found it on one playground, so we had to try it. So, the zip line.
Yeah.
I suggest you get one installed behind the board office.
Yeah, sure. Sure. Hey, one thing I did want to point out, and I appreciate, appreciate you going the extra 50 miles, so to speak, to Rochester to, to do the due diligence. But I also want to appreciate this board. And this is really an example of what collaboration is about. We had a board member, we were prepared to make a vote a, a month ago on this. And we had a board member that had some questions and concerns. And this board respected that board member's concerns. And we did more due diligence in order to see if we could collaborate. That's what collaboration looks like and is a witness to. So I thank the board member for, you know, raising her hand and asking, hey, you know, I have some concerns here. And I appreciate the patience of the rest of the board. That's an example of a high-functioning Board of Education, not jamming something down and moving, moving along, but, but, you know, collaborating and, and trying to appreciate and, and understand. So I want to make sure that I, I point that out as well. So with that, we'll go ahead and move for a roll call vote.
All right, Mr. Wiseman.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes.
Ms. Forrest.
Yes.
Ms. Grizankowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dodd.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Excellent. Eyes have it.
All right. Motion passes. The playground equipment is approved. We'll now move to new business. Item A under new business, Exhibit F.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Huron Valley Schools is always looking for partnerships and ways to support the community. We were approached by the Western Oakland Transportation Authority to explore a possible partnership that would allow HVS, HVS to support WODA with basic maintenance of their vehicles. WODA has 11 vehicles with which they use to transport citizens over the age of 55 and disabled adults over the age of, of 18 in Highland Township, Wall Lake, Waterford, and White Lake. And Huron Valley Schools feels comfortable in having the capacity in terms of our current staffing within our transportation garage to provide that support. We think that the partnership will be mutually beneficial. Presently, HVS and WODA are working on a contract with district attorneys. I wanted to bring this to the board to provide a high-level overview. Most board members have, have already participated in conversations and asked questions as it relates to this potential partnership. And I appreciate Mr. Wiseman providing a, a report out under his Finance and Operations report. What I would anticipate is, you know, this is our first meeting. It's coming under new business. I want to put it out there, ask if there are any questions of the board. Please feel free to contact me and, and, and share those questions with me. If I don't have the answers, I will absolutely get them. Within the next week or so, you will have a draft contract to, to take a look at. That should give you at least two weeks to review the contract and pose any additional questions. If there aren't any major questions or concerns with respect to the way that that contract has been crafted and drafted, then I will be asking for board support at the August meeting. So about a month from, from today, I think just over a month from today. So I did want to, I did want it to, I did want to provide a whole high-level overview under new business tonight, just because we really, I wouldn't be asking for approval until September if I waited until August for an initial reading. So that, that concludes my comments there.
All right. I appreciate that and appreciate the overview. And I would encourage any board members that have any questions for Dr. Slaw regarding this contract coming forward to please send those questions out. And then, and, and then Dr. Slaw, I'd ask you to collect those. And as you respond, respond to all the board members so that we all have the same information. And that will come back for a second reading during the August meeting. Okay, we'll now move to board policy 6,000 series.
Yeah, so you have before you the 6,000 series, which is primarily finance and operations of, of the finance function of our, our district and what we do with respect to not only purchasing, but some of our special revenue funds and, and really just the accounting and, and annual budget and budget hearings and all of, all those good things that make up the exciting world that I see every day. So there's, there's a lot of policy here. This is a lot of stuff to go through. So obviously, this is a first read. We have had several opportunities as a committee to discuss. Most of my committee members here have big smiles on their faces because they were as excited to see this. You guys probably are this evening. But that being said, I want everybody to take their time to take a look at these. If there are any questions over the next several weeks, do not hesitate to reach out to me. I'm happy to discuss those with you. We have gone through with Neola and edited as appropriate based on comments from the committee, which I appreciated, and really, you know, how we, how we look at purchasing and, and some of those things we do as a district. So there was a lot of new policy that has really beefed up, you know, the finance section of our board policy, which I was appreciative of, and a lot of things to, to think about. But very confident in what we've displayed for you this evening. And, and again, do not hesitate to reach out should you have questions on, on this particular section. So we are not looking for approval this evening, Board President. We're just looking that you, the board has an adequate time to review these dynamic policies.
Mr. Wiseman, was, was that a fly or did you have a question?
It was both. The fly is now over, Mr. Tervernier. Yeah, I just want to make a comment on behalf of myself as being chair and, and if I can take liberty of, Denise started as being the chair of Finance and Operations. We, we laugh about this, but at the same time, we are stewards of our, our students from an instructional standpoint, but we are a steward of our, our district's finances. And, and those finances come from the generosity of our community. And they have every right to, to understand how those dollars are spent and that we're transparent as it relates to that, and that we have a very robust policy to ensure the proper disbursement of those funds as, as we receive them. Yes, we have spent a lot of time going over them. But once again, just like all the policies and going through Neola, I think it's, it's good work. It's important work. While we had policies in place as related to that, they certainly were not as robust as they needed to be. And I feel very confident as it relates to the work that Jeffrey and his team has put forth and the dialogue that we've had. Sometimes it wasn't very exciting, but it was absolutely necessary work. And I appreciate that. And once again, this is information because of the transparency that we have, that our community has this. And they can take a look at it, too, because all of our policies are out there as, as we work through this practice. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Treasurer Wiseman. Any other questions? Seeing none, our new business portion of the agenda is done. I've received no public comments earlier, so this section is closed. Before I open it up to Good and Welfare, it is with a heavy heart here this evening that would like us just to take a moment of silence for Carson Dunn, who's a fourth grader at Country Oaks that passed away this past week. And if we could just take a moment of silence for him, be appreciative. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family and the friends in the Country Oaks community. I'll now open it up for, for Good and Welfare. Any, any comments? Ms. Pastana first, and then Ms. Cotter.
I just wanted to thank the team for the construction tour. That was a great tour. It was, we went to Heritage and Apollo and Spring Mills, and things are moving along, and it was exciting to see. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank Jeffrey and his group.
Thank you. Ms. Cotter.
Sure. Real quickly, this year at the Fourth of July Parade down Main Street was really nice to see. Can't have a parade without a band. And our middle school kids, it's a combination of all three middle schools came marching down Main Street playing their music. So it was nice that we had a great middle school band of three different schools. I enjoyed watching them. I even whistled at them.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Wiseman?
Yes, real quick, you might have seen a lot of activity on the roads with our yellow buses out. Tomorrow is the first day of Summer Academy. We're going to be out. A number of our students are going to take that as an opportunity. It's exciting. We have significant enrollment. I think this is, once again, the second year that we've had the, our Summer Academy as it is now. And it's really a great opportunity for our students to stay connected, our teachers to stay connected with them, and recognize that these are opportunities for our students to really embrace learning during the summer months. So I applaud our district for providing that. I know it's a lot of hard work, but I know our students are excited for their first day of Summer Academy tomorrow. So people out on the street, please be careful because we got buses out there. All right?
Thank you for that, Mr. Wiseman. Ms. Grizankowski.
You mentioned the board dialogue. And I had the opportunity on, I think it was May 3rd, to meet your middle schooler, Addison Mack. She came to me and talked to me about bringing crew rowing to Huron Valley. And I was able to connect her with Shannon Lozo for Rec and Community Ed. And I'm really pleased to announce that they are, they collaborated. They had a great float. announce that they are, they collaborated, they had a great float at the, I think it was the Fourth of July Parade. And it's really exciting to see such a young person speak very eloquently and to have this passion for rowing and to be able to bring it to Huron Valley. I think we sometimes think of rowing as Chesapeake Bay, or something you would see at Harvard or Yale, but we can actually do this here in Huron Valley with our resources, with Kensington. So just really excited to see what our student is going to do, but more than that, to see how she's going to change our community and change the way we look at rowing for Huron Valley.
Great, thank you. Any other Good and Welfare? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
It's a good way to get a fellowship to an Ivy.
It absolutely is.